Start your opening statement.
Okay. You pointed hour of six o'clock having been reached, I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty one, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequate adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Additionally, the meeting recorded, meeting recordings may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel as well as a ZBA webpage. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty eight and Article ten, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We will begin with a roll call of the members of the ZBA and panel for this meeting tonight. Steve Judge, I'm here. Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Maxfield?
Here.
Mr. Meadows?
Here.
Mr. Barrett?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Maureen Pollack Planner and Dave Washevitz, Senior Building Inspector. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section ten point three eight. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or to gather additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition is heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merit, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of the hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has one hundred days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision in the, with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds take effect. Tonight's agenda, ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash twenty one. Narian Sandpath requests a special permit in order to allow a non-owner occupied two-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot under sections three point three two one one, nine point two, and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at twenty one twenty three Kendrick Place, map fourteen A parcel twenty two forty one, general residence R G zone. ZBA FY twenty twenty one dash seventeen, College Street nineteen fifty seven LLC. Requesting a special permit in order to allow a change of use from a one-family detached dwelling to a non-owner occupied duplex dwelling. Extension and alteration of the lot coverage and building area on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Modification of the required additional lot area and slash family under dimensional regulations. Footnote A, section three point two one one, nine point two two, and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at one eight seven College Street, map fourteen B parcel one sixty nine, general residence R G zoning district. This is continued from May, our meeting on May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one. After that, we have public comment period, other business not anticipated within the last forty eight hours, and adjournment. The first order of business on the agenda is ZBA twenty twenty one dash twenty one, but I would like to move quickly to dispose of FY twenty twenty one dash seventeen, College Street nineteen fifty seven LLC. The applicant has requested a continuation until August, until our August meeting on the, on the grounds that they are gone from, they cannot attend. This seems, this is normally something we do ministerially at a meeting, just, just the chair acknowledges it, but since we have a full panel here, that is something I put to entertain a motion that we continue this to a date certain. Our meeting is August, is it twelfth, Maureen? August twelfth, but this, I would entertain a motion to move, to continue this matter until August twelfth.
At, at six o'clock?
It's, yes, at six o'clock. Mr. Maxfield? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote on this would be, I vote I. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
We, there were only four members for this panel. Mr. Barrett, excuse me, you're here for this precisely, and that's why.
This, and it's not clear to me that I can be here August twelfth. I'm not sure.
So we'll, we'll talk about that right after we finish this vote.
Well, actually, so if, if he's not available, this would be a good opportunity to talk about what date would be avail, you would be available.
Oh.
Let me check my calendar for August twelfth.
And so it would be virtual via Zoom.
Okay, hold on, it'll take me a minute.
I'll take the prerogative to suspend the vote while we figure out exactly what date we're continuing this to.
Right. I believe I could do an August twelfth meeting.
Okay.
And does that work with other members?
Mr. Meadows, does it work for you?
As far as I know, it does, as long as we're zoomed, then that, that's functional for me.
Okay. All right, we're, and we will be zoomed. Okay, so we'll resume the vote, and the vote is with you, Mr. Barrett.
And my vote is aye.
All right. The motion carries, the motion, the application is continued till August twelfth at six o'clock. Thank you.
Great. And just to say, so Peter, if you're welcome to stay in the meeting tonight, but since you're not on the panel for the next case, you can, you can leave the meeting if you, if you have.
I, I, I will leave the meeting. And we wish the best to all of you.
Thank you, Peter.
Bye.
So the first order of business tonight is a public hearing on ZBA twenty twenty one dash twenty one. Narian Sandpath requesting a special permit in order to allow a non-owner occupied two-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot under sections three point three two one one, nine point two two, and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at twenty one twenty three Kendrick Place, map fourteen A parcel two forty one, general residence R G zone. The members that are sitting on this panel are myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Mr. Meadows. And since this, a decision to approve a special permit requires four affirmative votes, we have only, we have only four members on, sitting on this panel. So this application will require unanimous vote of the ZBA in order to be approved. Are there any disclosures? If not, the site's visit was conducted on Monday, June seventh. We toured the property, we entered the house, saw the first floor, the second floor. Mr. Sandpath described his, what he wishes to do with the house and why he bought the house. We walked up through the back door, out to the patio, saw the patio and the, the walkway. We came around to the front of the, walked through the house again, came around to the front, viewed the front of the house, talked to him about parking, talked, looked at the garage, and looked at the, those areas. That's pretty much, pretty much what we discussed at the site visit. I don't know if any other member has anything else that they wish to add for the site visit. Okay. The following submissions have been received by the town staff. The applicant has submitted a ZBA application, a management plan, additional information required for apartments, site plan prepared by Randall Eizer dated September twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, a floor plan prepared by the applicant dated May twenty twenty one, a parking plan, a lease agreement, a complaints response plan, and photographs of both the interior and exterior of the property. The staff has submissions of a zoning map, a property map, an aerial map, a topography map, project application report dated June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The applicant is requesting waivers from section three point one six six, once, one six, building plans of the ZBA rules and regulations which require a Massachusetts licensed architect or professional designer to prepare the floor plan. We previously received, he's, he has submitted a floor plan that we previously approved in two thousand and eighteen when we offered, when we approved special permit two thousand and eighteen dash thirty four, and there are no changes to that floor plan. A waiver for a landscape plan, dimensional plan for parking spaces, and an assigned plan. We also have received one public comment from a Ms., a Ms. Joan Griswold, which was submitted via email on Monday, June, July fifth. That's all submissions. Mr. Sandpath, do you wish to proceed?
Yes, please.
So please identify yourself for the record, and how much, and let us know how much time you think you'll need for your presentation.
Hi, my name is Narine Sumpath, I live at twenty three Kendrick Place, Amherst, Massachusetts, and I'm guessing thirty minutes. I'm not sure, do you want me to present my case for the house, or run the slides through, or what would you like to do?
Yeah, what, whatever you want to, I, the key thing is for you to, is to tell us what you wish to do.
Sure.
Have more, have more discussion than we had at the site visit. Run through, I think it's important in this case for you to go through and talk about why you bought the house and why you're asking for the, the special permit for a non-owner occupied two, two-family home, and talk about what your, your goals are. I think there's not a lot, and then why you don't need any, any changes, why you're not requesting any changes to management or other plans.
Sure, sure, thank you. So I'm guessing we would need at least thirty minutes, depending on how many questions we have, so. But before I start, I want to say thank you to Maureen for all the help that she's given me over the last, I guess, month or so in getting all the paperwork together. So thank you, Maureen.
Okay.
Okay, so. So I've been, I used to live in South Amherst at forty six Palmer Lane since two thousand and thirteen, since the summer of two thousand and thirteen. And over the pandemic, like, with all my, among all the other challenges that people faced, my, my wife and I went separate ways. So I signed a site unseen lease with Ian Walsh, the previous owner, back in September. And because I couldn't even tour the place because of COVID, and the tenants then were not comfortable of anybody visiting, so I signed the site unseen on a place just because it was close to my now ex-wife, and I could stay close to my kids who are a mile and a half. And, you know, we didn't want to rock the boat and have a lot of changes for them because they still have their same friends who are actually one on Orchard Street, one on Woodside, and one in the house behind. So it really helped with the transition in our kids, so we, I moved in in September. And then I wasn't ready to buy a place of my own in Amherst, but looking at the property market, I was very afraid that I was going to get priced out because of the way the market is today and how expensive buying a place at Amherst would be with the way the property market is. And I think it was a cold February morning when Ian Walsh, the previous owner, sent us a note saying that he was gonna sell the place. And I was gonna, I had to think about what to do, and then I figured, we did the math, and I figured it makes sense for me to make an offer to purchase the place, which he agreed, and we finally closed on April twenty ninth. The tenants at twenty one Kendrick Place are a couple who, one of them is a librarian of the Jones Library, and we have a lease till the end of August, and they intend to continue as well because of the location. I have no intention of moving anywhere in the near future, I, because like I mentioned in my application, my kids are eleven and fourteen at the Crocker Farm Elementary School and the high school. I, the place has been very helpful for us in our transition, and the kids' lives have not changed a whole lot. But when we went through the paperwork for closing the house, I was notified by my lawyer saying that there's this zoning application which expires or is not in place when there's change of ownership. So which prompted me to apply for this permit, just so that to have it in place because it was recently approved rather than go through, let's say, five, six, seven years, I don't, if and when I plan to move rather than go through the whole process. I wanted to use the same application because nothing much is changing. I have no intention of moving in the near future. Like I mentioned in my application, I work at Holyoke Community College, I am the CFO and the Vice President for Administration and Finance. It's pretty close, about twenty minutes from where I live, and previously as to work at UMass Amherst. So I'm very vested in the area with all our friends and family here, so. That's the reason for my application, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and also about the landscaping and taking care of things around the house, since I don't intend to move anytime in the near future. I will be responsible for snow removal and making sure that, you know, the, the yard is taken care of. Fortunately, we have neighbors who are very interested in, I take care of like the snow and the mowing, all the part that is not pretty, that needs to be pretty, whereas our neighbors really like taking care of the dandelions and the flowers, so they're helpful as well. But as I mentioned in my application, if and when I do move, I have the contacts of all the individuals who worked with the previous landlord, Ian Walsh, that I'm more than happy to engage if I have to, but I don't foresee that happening in the near future.
So Mr. Sam Path, you realize that if you do move out and it becomes a non-owner occupied, you no longer can be the responsible person for taking care of this, and you have to come notify us if we should approve this application. Notify the town, and you may have to come before the ZBA for a hearing to approve a new management plan, to approve perhaps a landscape plan, parking, other things could happen if we approve this. You have to, and you become a non-owner occupied structure, there would be additional, there might be some changes to the, there will be changes to the management plan which need to be approved, okay?
Got it.
Do you understand that?
Okay, I do, I do. If there are any changes, then I would come, come in front of the board and provide the new management plan and the landscape and plan.
Right. Other things, yep. Mr. Sandpath, you, you're proposing no changes to the property, no changes to parking, you have four spaces for parking, and with two in the garage and two on, on the driveway, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Sandpath? Ms. Parks?
It, it actually might be for you. And that is, at this time, the house would be considered owner occupied. And, and so the point that you're making is that if Mr. Sandpath moves out, then it's no longer owner occupied, and that he would then need to come before the board.
Well, it would substantially change. The house right now is, is non-owner, he's asking for it to be continued to be considered non-owner occupied, even though he is, he is there. And so if he moves out and has a tenant, and this becomes non-owner occupied, then things, other things have to happen. The management plan must change because as he's no longer there to do that, he's got, and he's represented to us that he would hire additional people to take care of the landscaping, take care of the snow, do other things that, that a non-owner, that a non-residential manager would normally do. And so he'd have to come to the board and have that approved either by the board or by the building commissioner, if it seemed, if it just deemed to be insignificant. But those are the, those kinds of things are what he's have to come to the board for. So he's asking for, it's, this is unusual in that we're having an owner occupant ask for his property to be considered non-owner occupant because he may want to move out sometime in the, in the future, but it's undetermined.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Sandpath.
Yeah, Ms. Parks, I also wanted to apply for this because I know, like, for example, Ian, Ian Walsh, the previous landlord engaged professional surveyors to come up with documents, which, you know, is, is an expensive exercise as well. And since I was not proposing any changes at all, and it was, since it was a relatively new application, so I wanted to put forth my application this time around.
Okay.
It seems, I mean, the point you're making, I, I don't want to make your case for you, Mr. Sandpath, I mean, that's the job that, for you to do and, and for us to ask questions, but what you're, I think what you're saying is that you, since there are no changes to the land, to the building, to the landscape, to anything, that you don't want to pay the, you don't think you need to pay the extra expense to do this, and you just would like to renew the, renew the existing special permit. The weird thing is, is that for a special permit of a non-owner occupied in the RG is one case where it, it, it voids upon transfer of ownership, and you have to come back, it's unusual. This isn't, we don't do this with other areas, other zoning districts, and with very many other types of ownership. But in this case, in the RG district, you have to come back and get, renew the special permit for change of ownership if you have a non-owner occupied duplex, and that's what he is, that, that's the situation that he's facing. So we have a choice, anyway, that's, that's what's unique about this kind of this, this case.
Thank you.
All right, so just to, his, his, just to clarify, his status is not, the status is not changing, but by us, if, if we were to approve this, it's still with the caveat that he would have to come back if he were to move out.
Yes, and it's also a condition that we're willing to, I think it's a condition that we're, we're going to impose upon the, the special permit.
Right, and if I may, Ms. Parks and Mr. Judge, I guess, so, well, I love to go through the whole application, and if there are any changes, of course, like the landscape and the, the management plan, for example, and a few other items in the list would need to be updated when I come to, if and when I come to the board again.
Mr. Meadows?
I, I, I guess I'm just confused as to why there has to be an application at all.
The.
Because we have an owner occupied dwelling, I mean, what? Why is there a need for a request for exemption?
Maureen.
Maureen?
So, uh, in the, the, this property, twenty one to twenty three Kendrick Place is located in the general residence zoning district. And for owner occupied duplexes, it's allowed, permitted by site plan review. And it's, if it's non-owner occupied, it's allowed by special permit. And upon the town council some years ago, I, I'm not exactly sure when, in the last, you know, ten years plus or minus, there was a zoning amendment change to require that upon change of ownership, a duplex within the general residence would lapse, and a new special permit would be required for a non-owner occupied duplex. And that's only in the general residence zoning districts. You know, the previous chair, Mark Parent, when dealing with these applications, would repeatedly say, I don't like this, how it's written in the bylaw, but it is what it is, and it is something perhaps maybe the town would like to visit, revisit to see if that really, you know, makes sense opposed to then requiring, in this scenario, requiring the applicant to resubmit a, a new application, new fee, a public hearing, legal ad, all that, or if it would make better sense just to have the new owner come back with an updated management plan and complaint response plan and any other substantial changes. But as the zoning bylaw to date, this is the requirement. And so when Mr. Sandpath reached out to the planning department, he had indicated that he, you know, is intending to buy the property with the intention of moving, relocating, you know, in six months to a year. Because we did talk about, you know, if you want this to be a owner occupied duplex, he had the option of going through the planning board for a site plan review, but he had indicated that he does intend to move in sort of the near to, you know, near future, if you were to think a year from now is in the near future. So we decided that it would make sense in the long run that he could just apply for a special permit for a non-owner occupied duplex, since that is sort of the long-term goal. And so that's what is in front of you today.
I'm sorry, it still makes no sense.
Yeah, well, we're.
I hear what you're saying, but it, it does not make any sense. He's not a non-owner occupied dwelling, he's a non-owner occupied dwelling. And as an owner occupied dwelling, he's entitled to just a site plan review, and then if he moves, it needs to come to the ZBA, but I don't see that it makes any sense for him to be here at the ZBA now.
Mr. Washevitz, did your hand raised?
Yeah, I'm thinking the board shouldn't get hung up on whether or not he lives there. What he's asking for is the ability to be able to leave two months from now if he wanted to and be able to rent that space out. And, and what he has explained already is the fact that all of this information has been provided in the past about three years ago, and it was granted to the previous owner to be a non-owner occupied dwelling or a duplex. So that, that's all he's asking is the ability to do that so that he doesn't have to do it, go through the process, should his plans change dramatically in a couple of, of days or weeks, and, and he has to move and doesn't have an option. So this is just to pave the road for the future. It's a benefit that the fact that he actually lives there because he'll have a better eye on the property, but don't get hung up on the fact that he does live there.
But.
But I do hear what you're saying, Craig.
Does live there.
Yeah.
You know, and if, and if he moves out, then he's gonna have to come back to the ZB anyway, and.
But just for a, a public, but would probably just be for a public meeting to approve a new, of management plan. There wouldn't be the whole application, I, I think his, I think his point is that he's trying to, I think what he's trying to do is to minimize the amount of application cost and headache if he decides to move later on. And I understand your point. When I, when I looked at this, I said, why is, why are you doing, why is this happening? He's gonna live there, why are we granting him, why would we grant him a non-owner occupied building, special permit?
Yeah.
And it's only because it, he doesn't want to go through the hassle of, of applying for a special permit in two months, six months, or a year from now, when the property is already that, yeah, yeah, that's what, that's the reason.
Yeah.
I can understand that, but let me, let me, let me make a different point.
Sure.
I, i- if I, in my house, decided to rent part of the house and, and, and say, and suggest that at some point I may want to move, does that, does that make sense for anyone? does that, does that make sense for anyone who is an owner, in an owner occupied dwelling to come up and do preparatory work in order to avoid having to do it later? And it, it seems to me that it's, it's essentially a waste of his time and our time to do this.
If I may jump in, Mr. Judge.
Yes, yes, Mr. Sam Path.
Yeah. So, uh, like you mentioned, you know, when I looked at the application, when I got a copy of the permit and I looked at what was, what uh, Mr. Ian Walsh had been through, and I looked at all the survey plans, for example, that would cost me a couple of thousand dollars to get this whole application together, which is relatively new. And you know, there's no change in place at the moment. So that was one of the main reasons for me to uh, apply because it's a relatively new plan, no changes. I'm not going anywhere and to have it in place. And um, I think the changes that would happen if and when I were to move, whether it's two months, two years, four years, five years from now, I think there are just three or four documents that would need to be updated that I would have to present to um, to the zoning board rather than go through the whole process of a parking plan and have a surveyor come in and go through all that paperwork again.
And I would like to add that if the board, you know, is inclined to, you know, hear more about this application, you could cert, and want, you know, wants to entertain a decision regarding this. You could certainly put a condition on the special permit saying that, you know, the property owner needs to live elsewhere within, you know, six months or a year. If, if, if that is of importance that this, you know, truly is a non-owner occupied residence. Um, because, uh, you know, Mr. Sam Path, you know, initially did indicate that this would be a temporary situation and he was just sort of um, preparing for, for the transition of purchasing the home and sort of figuring out where he would be living and, and that, that this would be sort of a temporary thing. It wasn't indicated that this would remain a owner occupied duplex on a permanent basis. It, it was indicated that this was a temporary thing. Um, so.
But also, uh, uh, Ms. Pollack, I did not know a year ago that I was going to move out and have to find a separate place. You know, we don't know what's going to happen, right? I had no idea that I was going to leave my house for eight years from South Amherst to move. So right now I have no plans to, yeah.
Yeah, you have no plans. We understand that. So I think, look, we have a couple of options here that we should explore and talk about as the board. So let's, there's a good, this is a good opportunity for you to summarize anything that you think you need to say to the board and then for the board to discuss amongst ourselves various options that we want to come back to you and see, get your, um, reaction to them. So I'd like to ask you, is there anything else you want to present to the board? And then I would like to have a discussion amongst board members about this application.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Judge. All I would like, I would like to just reiterate that, um, we are very happy where we live. I don't foresee us moving anytime soon. The only reason I wanted to um, submit the application was because when I saw it in the last week of April, I figured rather than go through the whole process, I would like to piggyback on a relatively new application, a relatively uh, uh, new application, which is about three years ago and, and submitted. So I have it in place.
Yeah, I understand. So one, so it seems to me that amongst board members and staff, we've got a couple of options here to think about this. Number one, I'm not sure that we have the four votes for approving the application. Remember, that's the first thing. The second thing is the applicant does have the opportunity to, to go for a site plan review, which is, my understanding is, is not very costly. And it could be done, uh, through the planning, done to the planning board, is it not?
Yep.
That option exists. The other option exists is that if the application is approved, we could require as part of the, um, as part of any re, um, excuse me, if this, if site plan review is approved, any wishes to change to a, um, to a non-owner occupied rental property and he has to come back for a, for a, um, special permit, we could at that point waive the requirements for a landscape plan, a management plan for a site review, if you have a situation where nothing has changed. It's all as it looks like today. There would be an opportunity to, for him to request waivers of the things that are expensive and come back in a year or two when he decides he wants to move or unless and it wouldn't necessarily be as costly as it would be starting from scratch for a special permit. So that is a possibility if you go to site plan review. That if I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's, I'm not saying that that is assured, but that is a possibility that could be um, done that way without having incurred a lot more costs than that would normally occur. Is that right, Dave? Is that how that would work? Could the board could, after he went site plan review and he wants to, then he wants to become a non-owner occupied property, we could waive some of the, um, he could ask for waivers of some of the requirements for a special permit.
Well, that, that's certainly an option to go that route. Um, but it is more steps for him to do in order to go back to the current status. Well, I shouldn't say current, but what the previous owner's status was, which was a non-owner occupied duplex. So I think that's the thing that he's trying to do now. And it seems it might be more efficient to do it this way now because everything's in place, but that's certainly up to the board to decide. And, and I understand Meadows' point.
Yep. Other discussion about where we want to, where the board is headed on this application. Other members have comments or thoughts? Mr. Maxfield?
Yeah, I mean, what I think about this, it sounds like, um, you know, previous board had, had dealt with these questions about the merits of this being, this is a good area to have a non-owner occupied duplex. And it looks like they had decided, yes, this was appropriate. It did, uh, meet the necessary findings that, uh, if we have somebody coming up to us saying, you know, I'd like to keep this, I think any homeowner, if they can have that as an option, would definitely want that. And where, yeah, a, a, a board, this board had already decided that this was appropriate years ago. And it, it does just sound like a case of if he wants to move in the future and does want to go with this route, I, I think anyone in this position would want to keep that option open. So I, I definitely support, um, I support this plan. I, I, I trust the board's judgment from three years ago, and I, I'm willing to extend that now. Uh, in this case is where I'm, I'm standing right now.
Ms. Parks, do you have any comment?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this application as well. I guess what I was thinking is it's too bad we don't have that management plan so that we could approve this once and for all. But I understand if it's owner occupied, you don't, you're not going to have a management plan yet. So.
No, there is, I.
I mean, I know, I know, I know there's a, a management plan. It's, um, so, so Steve, what, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Judge, what do we, what do we need if, um, if this is approved and Mr. Sam Path moves, then, then what does he need to come back with?
He would need to come back with a new management plan that talks about everything from uh, having a, a person to contact in case of a problem, having a management plan for the landscaping, for the, uh, for the uh, snow removal, for trash, um, for lawn landscaping, I said, um, lighting plan, those kinds of things. They may not change. And he may ask for a waiver since it wouldn't change, but he needed for the typical stuff that a, that a non-owner occupied property has to provide as opposed to an owner occupied property. The irony of it is that he, that all those things are included in the management plan that he's putting up as an owner occupied, except that he's function, some of those functions that he wouldn't perform, uh, once he, if he sells it, if he moves out of the property.
All right. I'm, I'm.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes. And, and, and so if this were approved, then there would be a condition that um, he would need to come back, um, it, when he moves. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. There would need to be a condition that says that. And, and it would, we, we can put a condition on, he'd have to do it anyway because the management plan substantially changed.
Changed, right.
So he'd have to come back no matter whether it's a condition or not, but we would put it, we should put a condition on it to make it clear.
Right.
So, Mr. Meadows, I can see, you, you still think, you still think that this is crazy.
I think it's crazy. I'm sorry, but i- i- if, if, if this were, if this were a non-owner occupied, uh, I, I would, I would feel comfortable with it. But it is owner occupied. And just as though anyone else in town said, oh, I, you know, maybe I'll come to the ZBA and see if I can get myself prepped for 20 years from now. Uh, I, I don't see any point to this. So I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Meadows, may I?
No, no, Mr. Sam Path, just a second. Not right now. We're having discussion above the board. And so one option, a, a good option may be for the applicant to ask for this to be withdrawn. We do need four votes for this. We don't, and we, right now, we don't, there are not four votes to approve this. That's one. And then to see site plan review. Um, he could, and, or he could withdraw and come back at a later point in time with this, but I, but that would be the other option for the applicant is to would ask for it to be withdrawn and then go for site plan review rather than risk a negative determination on a rejection of a special uh, permit application, which you, I, nobody wants to have the special permit application defeated. Cause it keeps you out for two years from, from applying again. Any other comments from the board or from staff before we open this up to one last comment from Mr. Sam Path? Mr. Washevich?
Yeah, I just want to ask Mr. Meadows if he thought there was a benefit to the homeowner not living there and having somebody else come in. I mean, I'm trying to understand his point of view.
My, my point of view is that, um, that we have a number of owner occupied dwellings of this sort in town. Is that my correct?
Yeah.
And as such, what, what this, um, what this logically means to me is that if, is that anyone else who is an owner occupied dwelling says, well, you know, I might move at some point, why don't I do this now? And avoid what I'm in, in an attempt to avoid something in the future. I, this is a good case for, um, for a non-owner occupied dwelling, particularly the fact that nothing is changing. However, it is an owner occupied dwelling. And he doesn't really need a special permit. All he needs is a site plan review. And, um, so it makes, it makes no sense to me to be asking for special permits and waivers when you don't need them. I would, I would rather see when, when he comes back, if we want to suggest that, that if he has site plan review that we would, and nothing at all is changing and it becomes non-owner occupied, then we only review those, those documents that are additionally needed. But he's going to have to do that anyway. So I, I, I just think that, um, it's not his fault. He was, I believe he was led in the wrong direction and should have just gone to site plan review and been done with.
So it might be to his advantage to withdraw without prejudice then?
Yes.
Because in the future, it's going to be looked at as a denial otherwise.
Which, right, absolutely. It should be, it would be to Mr. Sam Path's advantage to ask for this to be withdrawn and to go for site plan review. And the one question I would have is site plan review is a less um, formal or less, there's less procedures and less, um, bureaucratic, for lack of a better term, um, processes you have to go through for, um, a site plan review than for a special permit. Is that correct?
Um, I, I would say perhaps, perhaps they wouldn't ask for the lease in the complaint response plan. Um, it's really up to the, the, the planning board themselves, but it, it would be in essence the same application and submissions. Um, but there may be some subtle differences. Um, it was, you know, to staff's, you know, understanding that that it was the applicant's intention to live off-site um, in the near future and that this wasn't going to be a, a permanent owner occupied duplex. And so that was why it was recommended uh, to go through this path since if it was going to just be sort of six months to, up to a year. Um, while, um, the applicant was trying to figure out, you know, where to relocate. But if it, if it does sound like this could be, it sounds now that this is kind of up in the air that maybe you'll move, but maybe you won't. It, it does seem that it might be better suited um, to, do, go through the site plan review if, if your intention is to make this a owner occupied duplex on a permanent basis. But it, but please correct us if, if, if that's incorrect. But that's, that's what we're hearing. We're hearing that you are unsure of what you want to do. Um, that this may be permanently owner occupied duplex, or maybe in the future you'll reconsider it.
Uh.
Mr. Sam Path.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Judge. You know, it's hard to, I, I, I'm sorry to go back to the point that, I mean, nothing is permanent, right? I know I'm not going anywhere, right? If you'd asked me a year ago, would I move from South Amherst? I would have said no way in hell, right? So we, there's nothing that we know for sure. I know that I'm not going anywhere. My kids are eleven and fourteen, right? So there's no question to me moving. And I go back to the point, the only reason I did this was because I thought it was a good idea to have it in place if and when in the future, because I do not want to spend three or $4,000 that Ian did and spent all that money getting this application together. So if we're going to go to a site plan review and if that's what you recommend, I'm happy to do it. But if I'm going to have to spend a fortune, a small fortune to get these things in place again, then that's unfortunate.
No, you wouldn't. It's the same materials. Um, yeah, it, it, you would be, in essence, you may need to fill out a new form, a planning board form, but the same site plan, all those, um, supporting materials would be the same exact information. It's just that you would specifically be asking for owner occupied duplex. And so what that means is as long as it's a owner occupied duplex and the planning board approves that, you know, you, you would be able to live there. But in, in the future, when you officially decide to move off-site and make that a non-owner occupied duplex, then you would need to come before the zoning board of appeals and ask for, uh, approval of that, of, um, that special permit.
Would I be able to use the same documents I had, Maureen?
You know, we can't promise you that. To a large extent, no, but wait, Mr. Sam Path, we can't promise you that. But if that occurs in the near future, we do take, you could ask for a waiver for a new site, for a waiver for a new site plan. You could submit the same management plan. You could ask for a waiver from a landscape plan. Those, and given the history, those might be approved by the board. And given, you can make your case. We do grant waivers for these things. So here, I, I, not all the time. So we can't, I'm not going to promise you that you don't have to do it. I think if the board members are sitting in the same time and you come by, I think there's an inclination to do that, but I can't promise that. And nobody could promise that. So it seems to me that if, if we look at this, the best thing I would recommend, and this is your decision, um, but it seems to me the best thing for you is to ask for this to be withdrawn without prejudice. That gives you the ability to come back and ask for a special permit if within, you know, anytime you want for a non-owner occupied. Pursue a site review plan because you don't have the votes for it and you don't want, I don't think the votes are there and you don't want a denial. Denial means you can't come back to us for two years. Okay? For this specific plan. So you don't want to do that. So my suggestion is that you ask for it to be withdrawn without prejudice. You pursue a site plan review and should your circumstances change in the future, work with staff to make sure that it, that the documents that have, that haven't, that the situations that haven't changed are identified and can reduce the cost to you of an application for a special permit to allow a non-owner occupied property. That's what I would suggest is the best course for you.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate. No, I appreciate your, I mean, I'm looking for guidance here. I'm not here to take advantage of, of anything, or I just want to follow the process, right? So. So I, I completely agree. And since, uh, it, I just want to clarify when you, so is there anything I need to do now? That I'm living there? So this current zoning application, uh, permit expires, so we just leave things as is? And in the future, if I want to change it to a non-owner occupied, I provide a site plan review, assuming not a whole lot has changed. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm not sure I followed that. What I would tell you is that what you should do is apply for a site plan review as soon as possible, because you want to be, want to have that done, uh, by the planning board. And then if you wish to change in the future, deal with, you can work with staff to try to minimize the um, documents that need to be created or, um, contracted.
Sure. And, and can you, can you please tell me what a site plan review is for? And what, what does that entail? Like, what, what does it give me? What, like, what is a site plan review?
I think, uh, Maureen's.
Yeah, so, so a site plan review is, um, an application through the planning board. Uh, the use, which is a not, which is a owner occupied duplex, is a use by right. And so the planning board would be reviewing the site plan. Um, and so they would be looking at your, you know, the submittals that you've already given. You know, looking at the parking and the landscaping and where the lights are, those sorts of things. Um, opposed to the planning board, which, uh, opposed to the ZBA, which is also looking at the site plan, but they're also looking at the use. Um, and the use is allowed by special permit. And so the zoning board of appeals has a discretionary power to see if that use is, you know, compatible and, um, with the neighborhood and if it's, you know, in harmony with the neighborhood and, you know, whether it would be, you know, you know, more or, or less detrimental to the neighborhood. So the zoning board of appeals is really trying to see is, is the, the use is that compatible with the neighborhood and with the town, opposed to the planning board, which is looking at a buy right use. And so they're just looking at the site plan and sort of the, um, the specifics of how the, how everything's laid out. And that is more or less sort of the distinction between a site plan and a special permit application. Um, and then just to add, so the planning board, again, would be looking at similar, if not all, the documents that you've provided to the zoning board of appeals. And in the future, if you decide that you do want to move offsite um, and seek a special permit for a non-owner occupied duplex, if those submissions, um, like, uh, that you've provided, if there are no changes, um, to it, um, then it probably would be reasonable for you to resubmit the same information. Um, so you wouldn't be starting from scratch. Um, unless you are, you know, have some sort of elaborate plans of, I don't know, doing something.
Unless you significantly change the, the property or the building.
Yeah, which I'm sure you're not, but just to say, if you suddenly wanna, I don't, I, I couldn't really think of anything, uh, unless I wanted it to be goofy of, you know, adding, I don't know, like a, a 40 foot, uh, foot, you know, slide going down your, your backyard or, or something elaborate. Um, unless there's something substantially very different to the, the makeup of your property. I'm sure that what you have submitted would be substantial, would be sufficient for either the, the boards to review.
I thank you. So I'll work with you on the, uh, site plan review. Thank you.
Yeah, so sorry, sorry for any potential confusion on our behalf, um, about this, so.
So, so Mr. Sam Path, if I could, if I understand you correctly, you're asking for a permission to withdraw this without prejudice. Is that correct?
Yes, that is, Mr. Judge.
Okay. So we have before us, um, what I'd like to do is close the, close the me, not close, I'd like to, to keep the meet, the public hearing open and move to a public meeting to deal with the requests from Mr. Sam Path. Maureen?
Uh, well, before you do that, uh, I, I think you should, uh, see if there's any public comment.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Yes, good point. I appreciate that.
So if anyone has a public comment, they could, uh, raise their virtual hand or, um, press star nine, I think, uh, if they're calling in. And I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand.
So I'd entertain a motion to keep the public hearing open while we move to the public meeting to discuss and vote on the question of withdrawal of this without prejudice. Do I have such a motion? Mr. Maxfield, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Parks, um, roll call vote. I vote I. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Ms. Max, Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
We're now in the public meeting portion, uh, where we can discuss this, but I, I would entertain a motion to accept the request of the applicant to withdraw this without, for his application without prejudice. Um, is, is there, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, is there any discussion on the motion? There being none, uh, the vote occurs on the motion. I vote I. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
All right, the motion to permit the withdrawal without prejudice has been approved by a four vote, uh, unanimous four votes. So, good luck, Mr. Sam Path. Um, please continue to work with the staff and I would encourage you to, um, do the site plan review as soon as possible, so you can, um, put that out of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks. Can I leave, Maureen?
Okay, and, and we can be in touch tomorrow about, um, setting you up with the planning board. And so you would be working, um, Chris Bresterup is the staff liaison to the planning board, but I, I can put you in touch with her, um, tomorrow or on Monday to set you up with that. So luckily, everything that you've done is good to go. So we would just need to set up the meeting. So I'm sorry for.
Live and learn. Thanks a lot, Maureen.
Okay, we'll talk soon.
Bye. Good luck, Mr. Sam Path.
Thank you. Bye.
Good luck. Bye. Good. Um, the next order of business on the, is, um, any public comment on matters not before the board tonight? Maureen, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on a subject that is not before the board tonight?
Um, no, um, there's no other item, but.
And, and the other issue is any, any other business not anticipated, uh, within the last 48 hours?
No, other than just to say we, we are, um, getting new, additional members, uh, another.
Additional members.
Yes, uh, a full member. Gilbert is his last name, John Gilbert, maybe? Uh, let me see here, a John Gilbert.
John Gilbert, yeah.
And he'll be a full member and then as.
Mr. Meadows will become a full member.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Greg, for stepping up to do that. And, uh, for associate members, we'll have a Eric uh, Crowtran, maybe? This is.
Chocrain, I don't know.
Yeah, and then a Karen Winter will be another, uh, associate member. And so, um, I don't have their, you know, phone numbers or email addresses, but, uh, once they're sworn in, um, I will, uh, like to suggest having a administrative meeting really for them, but for everyone, just to kind of go over, you know, the roles and responsibilities of being on the board and kind of just, and then actually, that might be a good opportunity to have a tutorial about going through like a site plan, looking at a site plan and understanding, um, like a plan set, looking at, at the site plan and the landscape plan, uh, like a stormwater um, plans, things of that nature. So we could, um, deal with that. And then if folks have any sort of general questions, uh, we could, um, that would be a good opportunity to have sort of a, um, a Q and A. Um, but, but, uh, so stay tuned. So maybe that could be in, well, we're already in July. So, uh, maybe in the next month or two, um, we could hold an administrative meeting and I can certainly, um, send out a doodle poll, um, to figure out when, when um, that meeting could be had. And, um, one other note, we don't have any applications that I know of that are, um, that, um, are scheduled for the July 22nd meeting. So with that, I am gonna say that, uh, we're going to cancel that meeting. And then, so the next meeting would be August 12th, and we know that the College Street application would be, um, continued until that date. And perhaps we'll have other applications that come in, in time for that date as well. So I think that's.
And that may be an opportunity, if there's no other applications, that may be the opportunity for administrative meeting to piggyback upon that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yep, yep. And, um, although I don't really have any more information about the whole virtual meetings versus in-person meetings, I do know that the town manager said that will, um, that boards and committees will be meeting virtually until September. And, and then at that time, we'll reevaluate both like the state regulations on it, um, most importantly. And, uh, and then see if we have any flexibility about, you know, continuing to hold virtual meetings or, and, or if they could be hybrid meetings or if they have to be in person. So I'm sure as, as the weeks and months go on, we'll, we'll figure that out and I'll certainly let everyone know as, as that information comes available.
Ms. Parks?
If we'd like to give input about that, is there anyone specific to, uh, direct the comments to about continuing, continuing with Zoom?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, you could certainly, uh, I would say email the town manager. Um, and I, I think it's like a generic townmanager@amherstma.gov. And you can certainly copy me on the email if you want. Um, or you could certainly just email it to me and then I can forward it to that, to the office. So whatever you feel comfortable about with, rather.
Okay.
Do you know, Maureen, would, would it be all or nothing? In other words?
I don't know. That's, yeah, I really.
Capable of being both?
I think that the town would like that, um, as an option. So for folks, uh, so um, I think the town would like that. What does that actually mean? I don't know, but, uh, I think the town would love to have the flexibility, both for board members, but, and also for members of the pop, of the public to choose whether they come in person or, or, um, tune in virtually. So, um, you know, the most important thing is, is just, we need to make sure that we meet the open meeting law and then, um, that will help sort of dictate, um, where the sort of flexibility can be held, had so. Um, but I, I do know that the, the town, the town manager would, would love to, um, you know, be as flexible as possible, but we just need to make sure that we abide by the law. So, um, yeah.
Hybrid is, would require lots of bandwidth. So that's, that's the key thing, I think, just for the town, who we have the bandwidth for. All right, I, I myself would much rather have the board in person more often than less. I think it would be great for us to actually be in a room to work with each other, see each other's body language. Actually have, I think that would be a, a much more, would be a better board, uh, if that could happen. And we could still find a way to get public comment from perhaps Zoom or other, not in-person public comments, um, to increase the transparency and accessibility of our meetings to the public. But I like the notion of us getting together as a board physically as often as we can.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Um, just to say, uh, I, I agree with that sentiment. I look forward to, we can actually all finally get in a room again together. It'd be, uh, it would be nice. Hopefully, this new iteration of the board coming up, we'll finally be able to have a chance to, uh, to all meet.
Yeah, we spent, we spent a year on virtual as a, and some members have had, like, Mr. Meadows and Mr. Maxfield. Ms. Parks, you've been totally Zoom. We've not met in person, I don't think.
You're Zoom babies.
Yeah, yes, you have. I'm sorry, you, you have, Ms. Parks, prior to the, your first term. That's right. Okay. All right, everybody, unless there's anything else, um, I would entertain a motion to adj, uh, Maureen, it looks like you're gonna suggest something that we're missing.
Oh, just, um, I, um, I will be, uh, working on the decisions from the last meeting, which was about the cemetery and two other pro, applications perhaps. So I'm gonna type those up in the near future and we'll send out an email hopefully next week for you guys to review and to come in to sign. So just, uh, um, stay tuned for that. So, um, and, and for some of you that may be away, um, you know, we do allow, although I have asked multiple times to our town attorney about e-signatures, um, I will ask again about having an official, um, comment about that. I might re- reach out to the registry of deeds to see if they have an answer, but in the interim, if you're ever away or just very busy for work and you can't sign a decision, it is legal for me to sign on your behalf and then I initial your name. So I just wanted to just mention that. If, if, if there's ever a time that you're, you're, you think that you're gonna be away for extended time period, that is an option.
Great. Okay, well, Maureen, take care of your back, uh, get better. Um, everybody's had back problems, who's had back problems knows that's awful. So take care of yourself. And I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have one?
So moved.
I've got, I've got three of them. I've got three. Do I have a second?
Should we do it in unison?
All right, there's no discussion on the motion to adjourn. I vote I. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We will see you on Au- August 12th. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a great month. Bye.